Welcome back to our premiere session. And before we recess for lunch, we have a couple items. And with that, I recognize the floor leader for the appropriate motion to explain the lower standing committee reports. Uh, meeting number two. Floyd.
Thank you, Mr. President. And our next standing committee report, standing committee report number twenty-two dash one-seven. Your Committee on Judiciary, Government, Law and Better Relations reporting on Senate Bill number twenty-two dash fifteen. The prohibited activity from occurring while traveling on a CNMI government trip paid or by the CNMI government funds. The committee recommends to file and go for its adoption.
The motion offered by the floor leader for the adoption of standing committee report number twenty-two dash one-seven. Do we hear a second to that motion? Seconded in the discussion. Recognizing from the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I again, I respectfully ask the committee if they can give her action on this report. And I, I ask this because, Mr. President, if you look on the committee report in the attachment, you will see a letter from the Office of the Public Auditor. And clearly, uh, the Office of the Public Auditor recommends the passes of this bill. Uh, I quote, um, uh, there on the other, uh, they're saying, "Determining whether there is a view or apparent use of government travel or political purpose is often subjective and can be difficult to conclude when there are two reasons for the trip." Senate Bill twenty-two dash fifteen would create an objective bright line rule, thereby removing the subjectivity in determining the true purpose of the travel," end quote. Um, there appears, according to the auditor, that, you know, and I assume that they're making this statement after they have made, uh, an audit of the government travel in twenty-twenty. And so, uh, clearly, there is support. This, the Attorney General also, the only other, uh, comment, letters coming from, uh, by, uh, from various witnesses on the same bill, twenty-two dash fifteen, they say it presents no legal issues. So, I don't understand. I read the committee report, uh, on page two. It says that, uh, in the event that a potential abuse of government travel exists, the CNMI government ethics code highlights the duties of the public auditor to intervene and investigate an official complaint made to their office. But exactly for that point, that the auditor is recommending that we pass this legislation because, uh, they're saying that it's a gray area and it might become subjective. And I realize that maybe the committee wants to further, the committee wants to maybe, maybe disagree in the way that the language is written right now. But I, I feel like we have a little bit of maybe amendment that, that we can get to, to, to the basic intent of this legislation. And it's for that reason that I think, because the auditor has sufficiently come out with the position and their support, to maybe call in the public auditor. Um, I'm just concerned, Mr. President, because in twenty-twenty OPA report, I think we need to do something about government travel. In twenty, uh, fifteen, at least based on the report, the CNMI government spent eight point nine million dollars. And in twenty, uh, sixteen, it went up to twelve. Twenty-seventeen, it went up to, uh, fifteen, and then seventeen in twenty-eighteen, about seventeen million. Right now, you know, this was last year. They were, they were giving us the numbers for twenty-eighteen at seventeen million. Now it's way above twenty million. And, uh, I think that the legislature should do something about, you know, trying to, to clarify government travel, public purpose. And this is, uh, in that direction. Let me just say that I did some Google research last night as to how federal government actually handles, uh, a situation where a government employ travels and then, uh, takes a break and does political activity during the government travel. And this is, uh, this is on the Department of Labor, the U.S. Department of Labor Office of Legal Counsel guideline. Uh, let me just go straight to travel, political travel under their guidelines. And I, and I quote your guidelines. "The prohibition on the use of government funds for political purposes also applies to travel expenses of PAS officials." PAS officials, uh, for them, uh, are those appointed by the president and confirmed by the Senate. And, and also others, uh, and others attending partisan political events. So, for travel to purely political events, of course, the political campaign for which the official is traveling must make all the arrangements and pay all costs. But for travel that includes both political and government events, the campaign or political organization must pay in advance a pro rata share of the cost based on the time spent on political activities. So, so basically, um, completing this, they, they, they allow the official to go on government travel. But if they, if they know ahead of time that they went to be attending, attending a campaign or political meeting, they, they have to pay in advance. Like if they work for three days, one day is political, they pay one-third. If, uh, if, if maybe they, they not attend, but they participated, I guess, when they close their travel, they have to, to pay the one-third if, if it happens at a time that, you know, it wasn't planned. So, I guess what I'm just saying is, when we can have the same thing. We don't want to prevent anyone from, from, uh, you know, what they do, uh, after working hours. But nonetheless, uh, if they, if they go on, on government travel, then they should, I agree that they should pay a pro rate, uh, based on, on the time that they spend on, in their travel. So, so that we do not limit them. So, that's what I'm saying, that, that, uh, if we need the public auditor, I'm sure with, with all the scenarios that they have seen in the past, we can surely come with an agreement on a language to, to better language this legislation. But, uh, let me just say that, that presently, under eight-five-three-four, um, uh, it does say, uh, because we did not change the, the provision that says the public auditor may adopt rules specifying examples of political campaign activity permissible or not permissible on release section. But there, pretty much they're saying that we need to clarify, uh, uh, whether they are allowed to do political activity in, when traveling. And that's where we can then maybe put a provision about the pro, pro rating of the, the expenses. So, I, I guess, um, if we, if the, if the members decide to, to pass this and kill the bill, then, uh, I will need to come up with a bill further detailing this. But I guess at this time, I, I think it, it is, it, it is not very, uh, clear why the committee would file this when there is no opposition from anyone. And the only two, uh, parties that, in fact, there's three, the municipal council, although they're not, uh, in detail, they actually support it. So, all the, the written testimony, uh, received are in support of it. And, and so it just makes me wonder why, uh, the committee would then make a conclusion that, uh, they want to file this, even with, there's no problem being with the, I mean, with the Attorney General. The OPA supports it, the local municipal council supports it. So, uh, I ask that when you produce and maybe call in the Office of the Public Auditor or if the committee would allow me to come up with another language, or we can just kill it and come up with another bill. But I just wanna point that out, that the auditor, who has, uh, looked, who has done an audit in, uh, August, I believe, of last year, uh, seeing all the, the issues and concerns other have come up publicly to support this, still see to the small set.
Thank you, Senator Maldonado. Before I, uh, I wanted to say something, but I would allow the chair of the committee to, uh, for the opportunity to, uh, address some of the concerns or comments raised.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. And, um, uh, in regards to the office statement, I, I do understand the growth of the government expenditures with regards to travel. However, we read the same comment in two different lights. Where you see the public auditor as supporting this, I, I read it as it becoming a convoluted process of identifying what's campaign, um, what happens during the course of your trip. The legislation as, as, as it's written says that, as, during the course of your TA, during your government paid trip, you are not to conduct or participate in any campaign related, um, activities. I would ask, what is, uh, political activity? If I participate in an LGBTQ rally, is this a political activity? If I participate in Black Lives Matter, um, CGMT, um, if there's a poster on the board? If there's no posters, if I'm meeting with other delegates from that region or that area? Um, it becomes very difficult to identify what is breaking the law with regards to this legislation. Furthermore, I would like to add that this legislation is telling, gonna dictate to individuals whether to do on their own time. Yes, you're on TA, but if you participated in the government function that you were supposed to attend, it is not the government's job to begin to tell you what to do on your own time. So, I, I, I do not feel as if it's the legislature or the government's job to, to dictate what freedom of speech they have. The courts regularly fight for the First Amendment right of freedom of speech. And with that, um, we recommend that this bill be filed.
Okay, um, thank you, Chair. Um, but before I recognize the next member, uh, I wanted to, uh, I thank you for both comments, both senators and chair. But I wanted to inform you, uh, members, that we are actually, uh, since last legislature, the president and then Senator Oko, they're working, forging a working room with the Public Auditor's office to address the very issue of government travel policy. And we have begun communications, again, reviving the meeting, which we had, uh, not too long ago, about three weeks ago. Council Vermones, um, sits in as the counsel for the meeting. And, um, the very issues that we're addressing now is contained and will be incorporated into the comprehensive or a more clear definition as to the concerns, uh, being, uh, discussed, uh, on both committee and the sponsor of the bill. So, uh, before I pose my question, I, I wanted to, not in a objection, I wanna recognize the, uh, Council Vermones to kind of give us, give the members a highlight as to where we at, uh, to date.
The, um, initial draft of the bill occurred during, um, last legislature in response to the outstanding recommendation by OPA to review the entire CNMI travel policy and make it uniform. Because, for example, the per diem rates are all different. Um, NPLT gets four hundred dollars a day for a trip. PSS follows the, I think, US standard. Uh, the worst ones are the legislative members and the staff that we follow. They owe, that hence it's cross-territory time. But eventually, the, um, Secretary of Finance changed it and they follow, I think there's four categories. So, I took that bill and I amended it to follow the, what the Secretary of Finance is going personally and deleted, because there's a portion in the statute that allow CDA and NMHC to do their own. And that was one of the, the inconsistent provisions, so I deleted that. So, the current, the current bill that we're, I'm drafting, will apply to everybody, including agencies that are funded by federal program. PSS, they're all gonna be the same rate. And this thing about, and including, um, uh, business class and, uh, seats. Because currently, the law says no government, government employee on government travel shall fly business or first class. But it was suggested that perhaps there should be an exemption. One is if, if a, a, a person on medical referral needs to be in a bigger seat, first class, upon certification by the referring doctor is a, uh, possible exemption. Uh, this political activity in connection with official travel is, is new. But I think we can possibly include it in the current draft. The first draft that I sent to the public auditor, their attorney, she came back with some, uh, recommended changes. So, I incorporated the changes and then sent it back. I think that was last week, but I haven't heard a response. But the political theory part is new, so I'm gonna see whether we can fit in a bit.
The, the ask, thank you, Council of the ask, because it's, I, I will be, the chair will be, be, uh, signing off on that particular reservation. So, the, the ask would be, we're gonna improve that, uh, particular, some sort of language, agreed. Uh, we'll show the members, uh, uh, the understanding that the concerns were being raised, uh, both from the chair and from Senator Maldonado to, to make sure we have some say as far as that concern, that particular issue. So, I guess the, the, the question is, uh, we, we already have, uh, um, legislation in motion, a more comprehensive one that encompasses a lot of this, to include the concerns. Uh, and that we're going to, uh, uh, improve that, uh, potential, uh, legislation, the next possible legislation, which will be introduced, uh, in Senate. So, uh, through the, the over for passage or for the alter, I'd like to request that, uh, we allow for the motion to be filed with understanding that there's going to be citations to the concerns being raised, uh, on the floor today. So.
Good, gentlemen. Um, I, I think if we allow this to be filed, then this is the message of this body. The message of this body, uh, for the committee finds that it is currently outside the public interest to implement the provisions proposed in this bill. And if we pass this, basically, every member here saying that this is not in the public interest to have this provision. So, right away, the committee who is working on doing a comprehensive, uh, travel policy would not entertain this. It would not be entertained because of the statement that is coming out from this standing committee report that is, um, unanimously passed by this body. If we were to, to pass this, uh, committee report, uh, it would send the wrong message. And surely, uh, you know, uh, the public auditor's statement here in their letter, uh, saying that, um, there's, whenever there's a true purpose, reasons for a trip, that, uh, there, there's a gray area and that we need an objective bright line rule. So, so that's all my concern is that there's the auditor's report here and then we're saying that, that it's not in the public interest.
Yeah, but, but with respect to that point you were raising there, uh, we are actually, uh, working with the Public Auditor's office to address such. And we're gonna raise that issue as well, uh, drawing, uh, referencing their particular letter on the matter.
So, so we need to make the amendment to, to allow the, the whole council to, for the purpose. And I think, uh, I mean, for the conclusion, because the conclusion would be, the committee finds that this subject matter will be brought up in a more comprehensive legislation and will be addressed, uh, at that time. But the way it's language now, Mr. President, uh, I think that we're sending the wrong message if we do not amend it. Unless they're willing to, the committee's willing to amend that and basically say, you know, that the subject matter is being entertained in the more comprehensive view and will be discussed at that time.
That's, that's actually the ask by the chair. So, Senator, come.
I have, I have no issue, um, because once once we get into discussions, we can fill out exactly what that bright line means. And so, uh, the committee has an issue with that.
Good, no problem.
So, uh, I'm gonna allow the, if that's the case, so I'm gonna allow the, uh, the chair to, uh, verbally and allow the council to incorporate them in the final, so that we can be consistent with what we're discussing. Bueno? Thank you, Chair. So, with that, uh, uh, I recognize the, uh, the chairman of the, the committee to make the statement by way of an appropriate motion to include in the, in the committee report. Senator, come. Chair, please. And Chair would like to call for a short rest.
Mr. President, before I offer that appropriate motion, um, could I make a, um, statement as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I do, um, agree with, um, the intent of the legislation. And, uh, just looking at, uh, the title and the subsection, the five-three-four that it references, I mean, it does state that, um, a public official or public employee shall not use public funds, time, personnel, or equipment for political or campaign activity unless the use is authorized by law or properly incidental to another activity, uh, continues. Um, the amendment states a public official or public employee shall not attend or engage in a public, political or campaign activity while traveling under a trip authorization paid for, um, by the CNMI government. So, it's kind of almost one in the same. But, um, I do agree that with the comprehensive legislation that is being worked on, um, that has been, um, worked on by, uh, the, the legal counsel, that all of these could be, um, included. You know, all of the concerns and the, the comments taken today could be included so that we can look at the overall travel policy of, of the CNMI to include, um, the, the activity that is, um, that should not be allowed. Um, and also the rates and whatnot, like you mentioned. And then also on C and the subsection eight-five-three-four, um, as we work, as the council works and, and when we, um, communicate with OPA, you know, I, I, I'd like to see if they have adopted any rules specifying examples of political or campaign activity. Subsection eight-five-three-four on Division Eight under Title One gave them, um, that ability to adopt rules specifying examples of political or campaign activity. Um, and I guess if, uh, in, in, in this code, if... And I guess if, in, in, in this code, if, if they didn't include that, then I think it would articulate what should not be done and what is allowable. So I'd just like to say for the record that when we do communicate and work with the public auditor that we ask if they have adopted any rules specifying those examples. If they have not, then I think it is incumbent upon them based on what is written down here on subsection eight five three four that they do come up with rules. Do we want to change that may or shall? We probably want to do that in the, in the comprehensive legislation. But I do agree that all of this should be, should be included in that more comprehensive legislation. So.
Thank you, floor. Chair, you go ahead.
Okay, so now for the proper motion. I'd like to offer motion to withdraw the, the, the motion that I offered for adoption so that the, all the, the comments and the ideas and everything that was mentioned today deliberately the, the legislation could be placed, added to the standing committee report under the conclusions. So that could be on record that it will be included, the language and the intent will be included in the comprehensive bill.
So move. Thank you, floor leader. And the motion is to withdraw, motion to put adoption of standing committee report number two thousand seven. Do I hear a second? Second, all those in favor of the motion to draw standing, adoption of standing committee report number two thousand and two thousand seven, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Motion for adoption is hereby adopted. Item number three, floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next item under reports of standing committees, standing committee report number twenty-two dash eighteen from the Committee on Judiciary Government Law and Federal Relations reporting on Senate Bill number twenty-two dash twenty-five to authorize the expungement of records of certain non-violent offenses and for other purposes. Your committee recommends to file legislation and offer that motion.
A motion toward the adoption, floor leader, thank you. Motion to adopt standing committee report number twenty-two dash one nine. Do I hear a second, Senator? Discussion?
Section one eight.
I'm sorry, standing, motion to adopt standing committee report number twenty-two dash one eight. And seconded and under discussion, the chair recognizes Senator David Villamore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm reading the comments from the Attorney General's office regarding this particular bill, which is being reported by the committee. And I'm just wondering whether, because the AG on their comment is recommending that the bill should be amended to this, the offenses. So I'm just wondering if there's any intent to address this concern or recommendation by the Attorney General's office so that these individuals that would, that stand to benefit from the expungement of their records would have a better opportunity for perhaps maybe employment, for example. So I, I'd just like to hear from the committee if there's any candida.
I recognize the sponsor of the bill, Senator Kidewa.
I just want to see how this is presented. First, then, this is the second time I introduce this legislation. And the first time the AG has different comments. So it's in act of it. And then we added more into it and now it is a different comment. So that's why I agreed to file and then work on a more comprehensive legislation. And the federal government and many states have expansion law. And here in the CNI, we just want to, a person who is, for example, on duty of a traffic, a traffic violation, that traffic violation will stay there for any request for your records will appear. So, so that kind of offense, I think, after so many years, it's about to even prime. And you can request a court to respond, but it's not necessarily means that they're going to take the record and burn it and no one's going to file it, they're going to throw it there. And if you commit another crime, your record will go out. So there'll be a more comprehensive bill that will be introduced really true.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ready, Senator, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. And so did we hear it correctly that our vice president will be introducing a similar but some more comprehensive legislation? It would not include then the most recent comments raised by the Attorney General?
All of the comments and the, we will send it again to the AGs if there are different comments. And the price will be this bill consult to be like, thank you. So there we finish.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we expect it to be more like the on point.
Thank you. Thank you, members. So no further comments. All those in favor of the motion. All those in favor of the motion to adopt standing committee report twenty-two dash one eight, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Standing committee report number twenty-one, twenty-two dash one is hereby adopted. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next on our standing committee reports is standing committee report number twenty-two dash one nine. Your committee on judiciary, government, law, and federal relations reporting on Senate Bill number twenty-two dash thirty-three to prohibit foreigners and other individuals from making contributions and donations to an election candidate or a political party or committee to prohibit fraudulent misinterpretation of campaign authority and for other purposes. Your committee recommends to be filed and I offer my move for adoption.
There's a motion to adopt standing committee report number twenty-two dash one nine. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded, discussion. All those in favor of the motion for the adoption of standing committee report number twenty-two dash one nine, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Standing committee report number twenty-two dash one nine is hereby adopted. Floor leader.
Our next standing committee report is standing committee report number twenty-two dash twenty-three from the Committee on Judiciary Government Law and Federal Relations reporting on Senate Bill number twenty-two dash zero one to remove marijuana or THC from all pre-employment and random testing by all government employers and the Office of Personnel Management with certain exceptions and for other purposes. Mr. President and members, I move for adoption.
Motion for the adoption of standing committee report number twenty-two dash twenty-three. And seconded, discussion. The chair recognizes the chairman of JBLFR, Senator Hart King.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I know that we had several meetings regarding this, this legislation. There were issues brought up by the Director of Office Personnel, Personnel Management, and I wanted to kind of clarify for this body some of the issues, the concerns that were brought up and how this legislation has addressed those issues. With regards, one of the concerns that was brought up was the federal funding attached, being that THC, marijuana cannabis is still illegal on Schedule one and federal, federally. This legislation has exemptions to mimic those of New York City who currently has made it illegal to take adversary action as a function of testing positive for THC to include police officers, emergency personnel, firefighters, first responders, sensitive positions, federal employees. So we've gone through great lengths to identify the, the concerns that were brought up by the different entities, and I ask for the support of this body for this legislation.
Thank you. Chairman King, members, any further comment?
General, are all the concerns of the Attorney General addressed?
Recognize, sir. Thank you. So the, the concerns for the Attorney General weren't necessarily legal, they were, they're grammatical, and those changes were made, clerical errors that were made during the drafting of the legislation, and those amendments and changes have been made for the request of the Attorney General.
Mr. Chair. So with that, all those in favor of the motion for the adoption of standing committee report twenty-two dash twenty-three, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Standing committee report number twenty-two dash twenty-three is hereby adopted. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next is standing committee report number twenty-two dash twenty-four from your committee on judiciary, government, law, and federal relations reporting on Senate Bill number twenty-two dash zero three to amend one CMC subsection twenty-eight ninety-two L to exempt the Northern Uranus Technical Institute as established by public law twenty-nine twenty-two from the oversight of the Office of Brands Management and for other purposes. Mr. President and members, I move for adoption.
A motion offered for adoption by the floor leader for adopt standing committee report number twenty-two dash twenty-four. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded, discussion. All those in favor of the motion to adopt standing committee report number twenty-two dash twenty-four, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Standing committee report number twenty-two dash twenty-four is hereby adopted. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next is standing committee report number twenty-two dash twenty-five from the Committee on Judiciary Government Law and Federal Relations reporting on Senate Bill number twenty-two dash zero seven to prohibit personal use of political campaign funds and to provide for the disposition of unused campaign funds by establishing a new section, one CMC subsection six-four-one-five, and for other purposes. Mr. President and members, I move for adoption.
A motion for adoption on standing committee report number twenty-two dash twenty-five is offered by the floor leader. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded, under discussion. Ready? All those in favor of the motion for the adoption of standing committee report number twenty-two dash twenty-five, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Standing committee report number twenty-two dash twenty-five is hereby adopted. The chair recognizes the floor leader for item number thirteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next is standing committee report number twenty-two dash twenty-eight from the Committee on Resource Economic Development and Programs reporting on Senate Bill number twenty-two dash twenty to establish the Hunting Act of twenty-twenty-one for the Commonwealth and for other purposes. I move for adoption.
A motion for adoption offered by the floor leader to adopt standing committee report number twenty-two dash twenty-eight. Do I hear a second to that motion? Second. Under discussion. Senator Hart King. Recognize Senator Victor Hook.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Chair, I am supporting this particular legislation, but I have asked the author if we can refer this back to the committee. Mr. President, I have asked the author to refer this back to the committee to ensure that there's something permit will not be dedicated to a one-time permit. And we may probably look into making some amendment to allow the Department of, or the Division of, the Secretary of Department Natural Resources to also, the bill to consider giving, you know, some sort of authority if this something season will be open for more than one. So I, I believe the author have agreed for us to return this back to the committee for further review and amendment. And we may probably take this off on our next legislative session.
Objection.
Thank you.
To withdraw, option three?
Yes.
So, Senator, I recognize the sponsor of the bill. Senator Cruz.
I guess here the request is to make sure that there's a disability when there is a, you know, a cultural, you know, event that we, we make it into law and we follow the law when there is a culture, then the, the piece of invalid will not be able to, actually, basically to, to allow a hunting on, on their respective territory. So I, I agree and I have no objection to, the motion to adopt this. So again, I thank you also, Chairman Hook, for that concern. As we also have different cases on the other, it used to be only one case, but yeah, a couple of, you know, activities that's taking place in the, with the, with limited hunting season for just one. I, I know that in the bill, there's twice a year. But if, if that P S R doesn't fall on that hunting season, there won't be any possibility for, to allow the, you know, municipality to request for, to hunt either deer or fo'kunakaboo or whatever that is needed to, to be on that, you know, P S R. I thank everyone for this, and I have no objection to withdraw.
Thank you, Senator Cruz. The floor leader for the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. And at this time, I'd like to withdraw the previous motion for the adoption of standing committee report number twenty-two dash twenty-eight. That will pending some amendments to the initial bill.
So. The motion offered by the floor leader to withdraw the motion earlier and to address some of the concerns that were raised by members. Do I hear a second to that motion?
Yeah.
Second. All those in favor of the motion to withdraw passage of our adoption of standing committee report number twenty-two dash twenty-eight, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Standing committee report number twenty-two dash twenty-eight is hereby adopted. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next is standing committee report number twenty-two dash twenty-nine from the Committee on Resource Economic Development and Programs reporting on Senate Bill number twenty-two dash thirty-one to amend one CMC section fourteen oh two A to permit senatorial districts to establish and regulate municipal golf courses to promote tourism, provide local recreation, and generate local revenues and for other purposes. Your committee recommends the legislation to be filed. And, Mr. President and members, I move for adoption.
A motion offered for adoption of standing committee report number twenty-two dash twenty-nine is seconded. All those in favor of the motion to adopt standing committee report number twenty-two dash twenty-nine, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Standing committee report number twenty-two dash twenty-nine is hereby adopted. Floor leader, the last standing committee report.
Mr. President. If, if, if I may, I would just like to briefly highlight the reasons why this bill is recommended for.
Which particular?
Twenty-two dash twenty-nine.
Okay, then, for me, Steve.
Yes, I just wanted to.
We're, we're back in session. And I recognize the, going back to item number fourteen. I recognize the chair for the R D E B, Senator Kidewa.
Mr. President, because you did not go for discussion, that's why I asked for a few minutes to just explain the reason why this legislation was recommended for filing. The Attorney General, the Comit, he emphasized the authority on public lands as the executive brands and also public land because that they have the authority. And then the, the Supreme Court also with a separate case on the free trade law, law, and the Supreme Court, this is Derigado versus Suncalas. It's similar to the free trade law when laws were invented, the authority to, and the management and disposition of public lands with the offices from there. And. with the offices from there. And because the the Supreme Court reiterate the constitutional mandate that public lands should be managed by by the executive rent and not the municipality. And therefore, the Supreme Court opinion found the free trade trade law law has not constitutional, and it's similar to this the legislation. Therefore, the committee took that with severe and very critical comments as a matter of fact to file.
Thank you, Vice President. Any other? I'm gonna call for another motion to adopt the committee report. All those in favor to adopt Standing Committee Report number twenty-two dash twenty-nine, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Standing Committee Report number twenty-two dash twenty-nine is hereby adopted. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last Standing Committee Report is Standing Committee Report number twenty-two dash thirty. From the Committee on Health, Education, and Welfare, reporting on Senate Bill number twenty-two dash one eight, to waive the Northern Maranas College tuition for a veteran with thirty percent or great greater service connected disability and for other purposes. Mr. President and members, I move for its adoption.
I see a motion offered by the floor leader for the adoption of Standing Committee Report number twenty-two dash three zero. Seconded. Discussion. Any discussion?
Three.
All those in favor of the motion to adopt Standing Committee Report number twenty-two dash three zero, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Standing Committee Report number twenty-two dash three zero is hereby adopted. The chair would like to call for a five-minute recess. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're back into a linear session and we're going to take a break. On the desktop, item M. This time on the chair, most put out on the order business, item M. Reports of special on office committee. Resolution calendar. View calendar. And on view calendar, the chair recognizes floor leaders.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our first bill on today's bill calendar is Senate Bill number twenty-two dash zero one to remove marijuana or THC from all pre-implantment drug testing by all government employers and the Office of Personal Management with certain exceptions and for other purposes. Mr. President and members, I move for its passage in the form of S D one.
With the motion offered by the floor leader for the passage of Senate Bill twenty-two dash zero one, it has been seconded, discussion? The non? Clerk, please call the room.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator Longguerrero?
No.
Senator Hoco? Senator King Neighbors?
Yes.
Senator Mongolia?
Yes.
Senator Kirua? Senator Sablan?
Yeah.
Senator Santos?
No.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. President, six members voting yes, two no, one abstained.
With six members voting in under affirmative and two no. Senate Bill number twenty-two dash zero one is hereby passed, sent in this formal Senate draft one. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next bill is Senate Bill number twenty-two dash zero three referencing Senate report twenty-two dash zero twenty-four to amend one C N C subsection twenty-eight ninety-two out to exempt the Northern Marana's Technical Institute as established by public law twenty dash ninety-two from the oversight of the Office of Grants Management and State Clearhouse and for other purposes. Mr. President and members, I move for its passage on, in the form of S D one.
As I can, the motion offered by the floor leader for the passage of Senate Bill number twenty-two dash zero three is seconded, discussion? Clerk, please call the room.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator Longguerrero?
Yes.
Senator Hoco? Senator King Neighbors?
Yes.
Senator Mongolia?
Yes.
Senator Kirua? Senator Sablan?
Yeah.
Senator Santos? Mr. President?
Yeah.
Mr. President, all eight members voting yes.
With a vote of eight, zero, Senate Bill number twenty-two dash zero three, passed the Senate in the form of Senate draft one. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move on to our next bill, the Senate Bill number twenty-two dash zero seven to prohibit personal use of political campaign funds and to provide for the disposition of unused campaign funds by establishing a new section, one C N C subsection six-four-one-five and for other purposes. Mr. President and members, I move for its passage on final reading.
A motion offered by the floor leader for the passage of Senate Bill number twenty-two dash zero seven is seconded, discussion? Ready, clerk?
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator Longguerrero?
Yes.
Senator King Neighbors?
Yes.
Senator Mongolia?
Yes.
Senator Kirua? Senator Sablan?
Amen.
Senator Santos? Yes, Mr. President?
Yeah.
Mr. President, all eight members voting yes.
With eight members voting yes, Senate Bill number twenty-two dash seven, by pass the Senate. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next on our agenda is Senate Bill number twenty-two dash one eight to waive the Northern Marana's college tuition for a veteran with thirty percent for greater service connected disability and for other purposes. Mr. President and members, I move for its passage on final reading in the form of S D one.
The motion offered by the floor leader for the passage of Senate Bill number twenty-two dash one eight were here as seconded, discussion? Ready, clerk, please call the room.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator Longguerrero?
Yes.
Senator, Senator King Neighbors?
Yes.
Senator Mongolia? Senator Kirua? Senator Sablan?
Yeah.
Senator Santos? Mr. President?
Yeah.
Mr. President, all eight members voting yes.
With eight members voting yes, Senate Bill number twenty-two dash one eight, by pass the Senate in the form of Senate draft one. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next on our bill calendar is Senate Legislative Initiative number twenty-two dash zero three to amend section ten of Article three of the Constitution of the Northern Marana Islands to restrict the governor's emergency powers to mobilize available resources to respond to that emergency within the executive branch but not including the legislative branch, the judicial branch, and the agencies. Mr. President and members, I move for its passage in the form of S D one.
Then motion offered for the passage of Senate Legislative Initiative number twenty-two dash zero three is seconded. Discussion? Ready? You know, discussion? Clerk, please call the room.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator Longguerrero?
Yes.
Senator King Neighbors?
Yes.
Senator Mongolia?
Yes.
Senator Kirua? Senator Sablan?
Yeah.
Senator Santos? Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. President, all eight members voting yes.
With eight members voting yes, Senate Legislative Initiative number twenty-two dash zero three, hereby passes the Senate in formal Senate draft one. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next item on bill calendar is Senate Legislative Initiative number twenty-two dash zero four to propose a constitutional amendment to Article ten, section two of the N O I Constitution to require the governor to provide a report on the social, fiscal, and economic impact of tax exemptions. Mr. President and members, I move for its passage on final reading.
And then motion offered for the passage, uh, by the floor leader for the passage of Senate Legislative Initiative number twenty-two dash zero four and has been seconded. Discussion? None? Clerk, please call the room.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator Longguerrero?
Yes.
Senator King Neighbors?
Yes.
Senator Mongolia? Senator Kirua? Senator Sablan?
Yeah.
Senator Santos?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Mr. President, all eight members voting yes.
With eight members voting yes, Senate Legislative Initiative number twenty-two dash zero four, hereby passed the Senate. Hereby passed the Senate. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, at for House Bill number twenty-two dash thirty-three, Mr. President, I'd like to, um, request the clerk to, um, remove the legislation from calendar. I do understand that there was a motion on the last session on May eighteen made by Senator Mongolia um, for placement and a quick recess was called after that. After the session, um, I did, um, go to the rules and, um, the motion that was offered was not in accordance with, um, the Senate rules, particularly Rule seven, section ten, withdrawal of those resolutions and other matters in committee, Rule six, section two, order of business, and Rule nine, section seventy, bills, resolutions, and amendments. And, um, it is for that reason that I request the clerk, um, to remove the legislation on the bill calendar as the legislation still remains in the Fiscal Affairs Committee. Um, in addition, um, it was the request of, uh, the chairman of the Fiscal Affairs Committee, Chairman, Senator Hoco, um, for continued deliberations in committee as he, um, is in communication with several House members on the said legislation. Um, so with that, I'd like to request that, uh, House Bill number twenty-two dash thirty-three remains in the Fiscal Affairs Committee, um, for more deliberations, um, as per the request of the chairman. Thank you.
Um, Mr. President? Thank you, clerk, um, under discussion or, uh, request as to.
Mr. President, um, the, the experts of the rules, the Senate, though, now and the meeting, giving the last session, regardless of how often a rule, in the past, man, I comprehend since we got, if I'm introducing the same day, the bill, my motion, the floor leader, now at the way of pertinent rules, consequently, a calendar, a deal, whoongi, now, come was sent ya. So it's the man who knows, now, come on, now, yeah, uh, other, you know, the man, I get what you say, the session, you gonna, my, my introducing, my motion, my place, the calendar, my boat, uh, uh, at this point in time, and I, when we put out the open government, uh, uh, announcement, the session, uh, I make sure that this bill was here, the guy, we announced to the world that House Bill twenty-two, twenty-three is in our session agenda for passes. Then, the last session, I made it absolutely clear, uh, call, call my calendar, stay, the deal, your next sessions, uh, there was a motion for its passes. As a matter of fact, the motion for its passes, the, you know, my second, the, if it was legal at that time, the last session, now, my motion, the my second, that only reason, often, uh, I stopped, that for the, the mover, my assure, now, it will be on the next session. Then regardless of often a rules, it brings us back, attorney, Mr. Attorney, it brings us back to the last session. In the last session, it was motion, seconded, and we're ready to vote. The only reason I'm gonna postpone is, uh, my assure, now, the members, now, it's going to be on the order of business agenda, that for my boat, the next session. So, and in last, if I'm gonna session, it was in order, the last session, the product reason, now, I think, Mr. President, we all know that time is of the essence. The governor made a presentation on the usage of the art fund money, uh, a month or so ago. We have his plan before us. The budget is being deliberated, uh, members in the House are finalizing the budget, and we all know that in order for them to move the budget first and to balance the needs of departments and agencies, especially the personnel needs to run this government, uh, at the two thousand nineteen level, I assume their, their planning, we need to incorporate the art fund. And every day that passes, every week, we don't know again when, until next week is our next session, and, uh, every week that goes by, that we do not tackle twenty-two dash thirty-three, uh, it means that, uh, we're creating more obstacle for this legislative body to do its most priority, top priority, which is giving this commonwealth government a balanced budget, which, Mr. President, I think, uh, let's just put it on the floor, that the boat, let's just vote it, if you're going to kill it, let's kill it. But the point is, we cannot keep the House waiting on this bill. We cannot keep them waiting because if this doesn't pass, then that, it's only fair that we allow them to, to rework whatever financial or appropriation or whatever they have before them. Because the House is, is waiting for us, they're thinking that we, this thing is being seriously, uh, addressed by the, by the Senate, and so, uh, we need to, to, once and for all, uh, dispose of this bill, and so, uh, Mr. President, at this point, I move that we pass House Bill twenty-two dash thirty-three, uh, today. And, uh, I hope there is a second for.
Second motion, Mr. President?
One of the board. So, sorry for that, Senator, uh, recognize the floor leader.
Mr. President? Um, on the journal, on the, the session on May eighteen, and I read on the, the comment, uh, statement by, by Senator Mongolia, it says, "Mr. President and members, I respectfully ask that we suspend pertinent rules of the Senate so that we can include this in our agenda for passage on final reading calendar today. I so move." Mr. President, according to the rules, again, under Rule seven, section ten, also Rule six, section two, and Rule nine, section seventy, the floor leader is the only one that could motion for replacement, um, or to even suspend rules. And I have no problem, you know, to, to deliberate the, 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 the House Bill, um, number twenty-two dash thirty-three, and like I said, there was a request by the, the chairperson of, uh, Fiscal Affairs as he is in communications with some House members, and that's what he, was mentioned today, um, that there is some ongoing communications pertaining to the bill. And again, right now, a motion to place on calendar by a member, again, in accordance with Senate rules, Rule seven, section ten, Rule six, section two, Rule nine, section seventy. The floor leader, Mr. President, shall be the member to offer motions for suspension of rules and for placement, but either, either way, we want to afford the chairman of Fiscal Affairs, and he's not here, and I, uh, we don't want to move forward because there are some communications, again, as he said, um, that is ongoing for these said legislation. So, Mr. President, I stand with the request that we remove House Bill twenty-two dash thirty-three as it is officially still in committee. And that is in accordance with the rules of the Senate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, floor leader.
President.
Senator.
Mr. President, um, the floor leader might be correct in the wording of the rules, but as we all know, um, that when, when the process is in motion, sometimes members overlook the rules, and it is for the floor leader, at that point, when the motion was made, to clarify that, the fact that he wasn't brought out, uh, means he forgives, and he, uh, he wakes that part of the rule. Uh, because I say this because it was the understanding of this body in the last session, and that was, that was why we stopped all discussion, because we agreed that we were going to wait for the next session. The president declared, and I don't have the journal in front of me, but the president declared that this would be placed on our second reading calendar, and that's why the order clerk put it in there because that was the understanding of this body, that we were going to not consider the motion to place it in the last session, and that's why the question was never answered at that point because the president came in and said, we, of course, of perusing the members, perusing the chairman of Fiscal Affairs, that it be placed on our second reading calendar, and that was, that is why it appears here because the clerk, uh, had hearing that question from the president or that understanding from this body. So it is already on our order of business, uh, on final reading calendar. That question, uh, is behind us. We cannot now try to be technical and say that it's not the floor leader that made the motion. The fact that the president made that announcement, and there was no question as to wait, wait, Mr. President, you cannot put it in the calendar because the floor leader, under floor here, it's supposed to make a motion, that, that rule, part of the rule has been technically waived because the Senate members agreed that it's on House Bill on our second reading calendar, but putting all of this aside, Mr. President, I think that we don't have much.
I think that we don't have much time, as, as, as the argument in the last session, we don't really have much time to dispose of, or to, to try and sit down and talk about the ARPA. Uh, the House is, is moving forward, they're waiting for us on this, the governor's moving, making commitments, let's just dispose this. Uh, last time, it was the legal opinion, that, you know, the speaker cannot vote twice. I don't know, I, I never see any legal opinion on that, but, you know, we can argue about that. Um, before, it was OR, it'll be, uh, uh, legal councils that approved it. Now, maybe there's a different opinion. I'm just saying that all this is, is, uh, up to us, uh, members, uh, because we know this would be a political question as to, you know, the House rules. I think the bottom line is, uh, the legislature's most important job is, is the budget. And this plays a big role in the budget because it supplements, uh, the next two years' operation of our government, medical, referral, PSS, or, uh, uh, operation of all the various departments. And I think we should just take a vote. And, you know, if, if there's not enough vote, it's not enough vote. Let's just stop playing along with this so that the House can then, uh, know that this bill is there and then they come out with other fiscal legislation or something to, to address, uh, certain infrastructure or needs here to, uh, to counter the effect of the COVID, which is the main purpose for, for this funding. So, um, I, I think, Mr. President, uh, we have a motion, and it's been seconded, and, uh, I move for, you know, the previous question, we, we take a vote on this bill, and just dispose it. Thank you.
Mr. President? Again, uh, since, for you, on the board, there again. There is no rules in, in our Senate rules that provides for technical waiving of any rules. Even the motion right now is out of order. Motion cannot, no, the, the, the floor leader has, by rule, is the member to offer motions for suspension of rules or pulling up legislation. And we just went down from, we just went through so many, um, legislations on our Senate Committee Report and our bill calendar. And if any member is allowed by the rule, then any member could have, could have, um, um, motioned to pass all the other legislations on bill calendar. I stand again by the rules, okay? And I stand by my requests that the legislation is removed from the calendar and remains. It is still in committee. The House Bill twenty-two dash thirty-three was referred by, um, the floor leader's office to, to the Senate Fiscal Affairs Committee on March twenty-nine. Nothing in compliance with the Senate rules took that out of committee. Whether it was motioned and, and, um, it wasn't mentioned in the last, because we went on a quick recess on that motion and, on that motion from, uh, Senator Mangonia. And we went on the quick recess because we had to have Senator Mangonia retract the motion because to pass legislation here, from this member. And that's to the Senate rules. So again, and that is for the last time, I stand by my request. I stand by my request that the legislation, and it, it doesn't mean that it's not going to go anywhere. The request is just for it to be placed where it's at now, which is in committee because it was never officially moved to be placed on calendar in accordance with the Senate rules. That's all. And again, as the, the Fiscal Affairs Chair mentioned during our, our leadership meeting, that there are some, some communications with House members on the Senate legislation, so there's no.
Mr. President, short recess or a new council, or this is a recommendation, or new council can read back the journal. Uh, because.
Short recess.